Yeah, we can get started. I with so we lost Cindy and Jim at the end of last year and we haven't quite finished filling those positions yet. We do have a couple of new members, but they have to be approved next Tuesday at the board meeting. Franklin is one, so he decided to come and listen in and Chase Monson, he didn't know if he would make it or not, he had another commitment, but he is the other appointee. So if we want to get started, Josh is our vice chair from 2024. And I guess I wasn't planning to, I didn't know if you guys would want to, I suppose if you want to, that's fine, to appoint a new chair and vice chair for 2025. I thought we could wait till you have the full membership, but that is up to you. Otherwise Josh will kind of take over for the meeting anyway.
All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Roll call of who's here?
Josh Grant.
Yep.
John Glasspool.
Yeah.
Larry Gosted.
Yes.
Eric Johnson.
Yes.
And Wayne Feldmeyer.
Yep.
I guess I didn't state it for the membership, but Eric is the new delegate from the Board of Commissioners to replacing Greg.
Everybody good, wait until we got the other two to report with that in the future.
We probably should.
Yep. All right, um, do you want to read the notice?
Yeah. So please take notice that there will be a meeting on Thursday, January 23rd at 5:00 PM to review amendments to the Houston County zoning ordinance. This meeting will take place at the Houston County Commissioners Room in the city of Caledonia, Minnesota. Draft amendments are available for inspection at the Houston County Courthouse, room 209 in Caledonia and on the Houston County website under ordinances. The affected sections and topics include section three, rules and definitions, section 14 in the egg protection district to add cannabis businesses, section 16 of the highway business district to add cannabis businesses, section 17 of the general business district to add cannabis businesses, section 18 limited industry district to add cannabis businesses, and section 19 general industry industrial district to add cannabis businesses. This was advertised on January 8th of 2025. So in the memo that I drafted for you guys, it says that so on December 31st, the Board of Commissioners adopted this ordinance regulating cannabis businesses, and that was included in your packet. That outlines, some of it we kind of had briefly discussed, I think in September with you guys, but the big thing was we, the county is going to have jurisdiction over all municipalities until municipality adopts its own ordinance. At this point in time, La Crescent, I believe, is the only one that has completed that, but Caledonia should be pretty close, I think. I'm not sure if you know any more about that. I think it was the end of this month they were going to finalize that. And so those are the only two at this point that I've heard for sure are working on them. They did limit the number of business, retail businesses to four under county jurisdiction. And so obviously that'll, as maybe a city takes on their own ordinance, it'll modify how that, the area that that covers in the county. This ordinance then also kind of dictates the minimum or the buffer requirements. They did stick with 1,000 feet of a school, 500 feet of a daycare, 500 feet of a residential treatment facility, and 500 feet of a public park. Is that, is that correct? Now that I say that out loud, did I, I might have an old copy. Cause I thought we modified.
We modified, we modified the, went from 1,500 feet to 500 feet for like having too close to each other.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Next page. So then, and 500 feet from main door of one, one business to the other.
Right.
Um, there's some order mitigation requirements, security theft mitigation requirements, light pollution, and then the zoning and land use was the other major part of that ordinance. And so we went through and designated, in most districts, it's an IUP, and I guess we can maybe just go through those. So cultivation is prohibited in residential, commercial, industrial, and just, and permitted with an interim use permit in the egg district. Cannabis manufacturer is prohibited in residential and permitted with an interim use permit in agricultural, commercial, and industrial. Hemp manufacturer is prohibited in residential, permitted with an interim use permit in egg, commercial, and industrial. Wholesale is prohibited in residential and agricultural, but permitted with an interim use in commercial and industrial. Cannabis retail is prohibited in egg and residential, but is just a permitted use in commercial and industrial districts. Cannabis transportation is prohibited in residential, just a permitted use in commercial and industrial, and an interim use in agricultural. Cannabis delivery is prohibited in residential, permitted in commercial and industrial, and an interim use in agricultural. And cannabis testing facility is prohibited in agricultural and residential, permitted in, just a permitted use in commercial and industrial. Microbusiness is prohibited in residential and an interim use in agricultural, commercial, and industrial. A mezzo business is prohibited in residential, permitted with an interim use in egg, commercial and industrial. And medical cannabis is prohibited in residential and permitted as an interim use in egg, commercial, and industrial. And then low potency hemp is prohibited in residential and permitted with interim, as an interim use in egg, commercial, and industrial. Hours of operations are between the hours of 10:00 AM and 9:00 PM, six days a week, and Sundays between noon and nine. Advertising is limited to just two signs on a building. They did add from the draft you guys had seen that sales are prohibited in a vending machine and, and as a movable place of business, so like these food trucks that are out there, they can't do a cannabis version for that anywhere here. And then multiple businesses or multiple licenses was another thing that was kind of added after the draft that you guys saw. And that just limits, or the intent was to, to make it so that one person or one entity can't come in and just take all the licenses within the county. And that is, I guess, kind of a quick summary of that ordinance. If you guys didn't have a chance to take a look at that, like I said, that was finalized. And so we're not actually looking to change anything within that language. What we're looking at today is to add cannabis businesses to our zoning ordinance and then reflect those uses within all the respective districts.
Could a guy set it up so that they've got a permit just to grow it?
Permit to what?
I don't think.
Grow.
To grow?
Their own farm or whatever.
Like for personal use?
Yeah.
The state allows that, and I don't, I don't think we want to get in the business of permitting all of the personal use.
The state, the state allows you to grow eight plants.
Nobody stops at eight though.
Four in bloom. Well, I mean, that's just what I'm saying, that, I don't know how they're going to police that, but it's four in bloom, eight plants total. If you want to do a large cultivation, you do have to get an IUP, a permit. You'd have to come.
Everybody I've talked to feel like this, they're all saving their seeds. And what they want to do is just grow their own.
Well, that's what they're doing, yep.
They're doing it now.
So wouldn't it be better if we found out who was growing it? Cause that way, when a cop pulls somebody over, he'll know right away. Marijuana stays in your system about 10 days. And if the cop wants to check this guy out, you can take him in, check him out, and if he smoked marijuana within 10 days, he's going to get nailed for it.
No.
Why not?
It's legal. You, you, you're allowed.
Yeah, you can't drive with it.
Right, but they have their own testing now for saliva.
Yeah.
They did a pilot program, they got saliva tests that they can test to see if you're under the influence. So that's what they can do. We can't police the individual growing of it or use of it because it is legal now in Minnesota. The state legislature made it legal.
That's the dumbest thing they ever did.
Yep, talk to your state legislature about that, but we can't do nothing about it at the local level. All we can do is try to come up with rules here to.
Yeah, but that way, if, if they tested anything for marijuana, they, if they smoked within 10 days, they're going to test for it. And if they test for it and you find out they've got, they smoked marijuana, then you could nail them, you could nail them right to the wall, take their license away.
Well, if they're driving under the influence, yes, they could.
Yeah.
Yep, and they're doing, they're going to be doing that.
Wouldn't it be better, better off so we knew who was smoking it?
I don't know what you mean. Who, how are we going to find that out, Wayne?
Well, if they want a permit to grow it, they'd have to sign a deal.
No, no, cause the, the state legislature rules, an individual is allowed to grow eight plants, period. That's it. There's nothing, there's no policing that. That's, that's the law. That came into effect right away when they passed the legality of it. That was, they, they, they were able to do that from day one when they passed it. They haven't been able to set up a retail shop yet.
Doesn't make any sense.
I know, Wayne, it's just the way it is. I can't, we can't change it. If I'm, if I'm wrong, you guys speak up if that's, you know.
Well, if they had to admit they're growing it, and if police would know that they're growing it, you know, you could check them for it.
Well, they got other rights.
Actually, there's a law against doing that. You can't do it.
Can't do that?
Nope, you can't go after them for that.
Cause it's legal, they can raise.
Yeah.
Really?
Yep.
Well.
Go, go talk to your legislature about it and get all the questions, those kind of questions answered from them.
Yeah. I'll shut up then.
Well, I'm just trying to say, you're late in the argument. That's what I, what's really bound, bound to, you're late in the argument.
Yeah, I probably am.
That ship has sailed.
The licenses to grow this stuff, what does that pertain to?
If they're going to grow.
I mean.
More than five plants.
I mean, the people that got the shops and that stuff, is there a license cost to them?
Cannabis manufacturer, right?
Is there a cost to them?
There is at the state level, and I don't know for sure what that is. And then there'll be a registration or application fee at the county level. I forget which one is.
Registration is what it is.
Registration.
Yep.
So they will need permits from both entities.
Yep, they'll need to get a permit from the state, and then the registration through the county.
And the limit of four, that's on the retail side, right?
Yep.
You really think people are going to do that?
I think a limit of four.
Get a registration from the state?
If they want to grow mass amounts.
Yep.
If they want to manufacture it, yes, they will.
How's that going to work if they're, cause there's two in Caledonia right now, right? That I would assume would apply. And then is there already more than four in the county?
Yeah, so now that La Crescent has their own ordinance, everything that's going in there doesn't count against their county quota.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
As soon as Caledonia finalizes theirs, theirs will be in the same boat.
It's four, once outside of city limits, if cities enact their own.
Yeah, four, yeah, four under county jurisdiction, and so it's always changing as, or will be, like if Spring Grove was to adopt one, then it would, they'd put their own quota in place.
Gotcha, okay.
And then it would kind of maybe open up more spots.
That makes sense, got it, yep.
I talked to the city administrator in Houston, and they're going to just follow, be under our ordinance.
Yeah, so the, the definition I'm proposing is from the, from 342, and it, like you can see, it just references all the type, license types that are out there. And I just left it pretty general in, in putting it in each one of the districts. It does shift some numbering, so that's why they just, general formatting changes within a couple of those, because we actually didn't have any interim uses listed within highway business and general business, I believe. I did put together a few findings that isn't necessarily required for this proposal, but if that helps you guys kind of think through it. So statute 342 gives local government units the ability to adopt reasonable restrictions on the time, place, and manner of the operation of a cannabis business, provided that such restrictions do not prohibit the establishment or operation of cannabis businesses. With that, the Board of Commissioners adopted an ordinance to regulate cannabis-related businesses on December 31st of 2024, identifying zoning districts in which specific types of businesses are allowed. And then the cannabis-related business ordinance applies to all areas of Houston County, including incorporated areas, unless the incorporated area has adopted an ordinance regulating cannabis businesses. And then the Houston County zoning ordinance should be updated to be compatible with the cannabis business related ordinance, related business ordinance. So if you guys wanted to include those in your findings, you can, if you want to, or in your recommendation, you can add more.
I think if they are going to fine them, you got to fine them. You can't just play with them for a hundred dollars or $400 or $600. You got to raise that fine up a couple thousand, you know.
If it's something that violated the zoning ordinance, that's punishable by misdemeanor, which could be 90 days in jail, I believe, or a thousand dollar fine. I don't recall right offhand what enforcement was within the cannabis business ordinance.
You got to think about it, if you're taking a dope smoker and put him in jail, you're giving him free room and board. You know, they do that just for the hell of it, you know.
Can't put them in jail for being a dope smoker anymore, Wayne.
No.
Not yet. So like if, if there's a violation of the ordinance, cannabis retail business can temporarily lose their license, right?
I believe so.
Yep. If there's a violation that the state has found. So there's one thing where if the state comes down and finds a violation in what the cannabis retail business is doing, the county can pull their permit until it's rectified.
Are they going to be checking regularly, or do they have to have a complaint first? You know?
It, it'll be complaint-driven system, and then the, like, sheriff will be doing.
There is compliance, I think, I think it's once a year.
Once or twice a year, they'll be doing like underage checks, you know, like to do with cigarettes and alcohol. Doing undercover checks.
Yeah, 2.3, 2.4 of the cannabis ordinance says the county sheriff shall complete at minimum one compliance check per calendar year of every cannabis business to assess if the business meets age verification requirements.
Maybe I'm, I don't, I don't think I missed it, but there's no maximum as far as how much a guy can grow if you have a commercial operation, correct? I mean, I didn't see anything.
Um, not within our ordinance, and I haven't memorized 342 yet.
Okay.
That'd be under state ordinance, and I don't know what that is either.
Yeah.
I'm sure, I'm sure there's a maximum for the state permit, I don't know what that is.
Yeah. So no, we didn't discuss that.
Yep.
You know, if you're going to be out there round bailing it up or what? I'm just looking for more work. So today, does the, the ones like in Caledonia, for example, do they sell they actual marijuana, or can they only sell the lower stuff?
Low potency.
Right now? When does, when does it come where they can actually?
That's been pushed back till like June.
Yeah, this is getting in front of that.
This is getting in front of that, yep.
Yeah. This, the actual cannabis business ordinance is just going to be a document that will have to evolve as we kind of figure things out too, so. We just wanted to get something in place before that January 1 date, which was the start of it, and then it was March, and I guess, and now they're looking at June, so.
Well, they're still shooting for March, but it'll be June before anything gets.
March for the lottery?
Gets awarded, yep. Because there's been a lawsuit for that social equity application, there's a lawsuit to stop that, they, because it was unfair. So then the state stopped, and then they, for, then do nothing for a while, and then they decided to just throw that out, they're not going to do that now. So now they're just reopening it up for registration or lottery chances, and then they're going to implement the social equity part at the same time. So I, they got to, they got to cipher through what qualifies as social equity and what's They got a bigger headache on their hands than what we do right now, so.
I think we'd be better off not passing anything.
Yeah, the state wouldn't allow that.
Nope.
Can't have no dry counties in the state.
Used to be, during the prohibition.
This is a bad deal, you know? No matter what you look at, it's a bad deal.
For some, I can understand they think that, and for some, there's, I think it's great.
All you got to do is live next to a dope smoker, and that's a bad deal.
Wayne, you can't be, you can't be talking like that.
Yeah, I can't.
No, not in a public meeting. You can't be saying that kind of stuff at a public meeting.
I can't.
I don't think you're going to see much of anything go on that already isn't going on.
Yeah.
That's what I was.
Has the rest of the counties pretty much the same as this, Eric?
This, yeah, there, a lot of the counties have done something, Fillmore County is getting close to doing something similar to this. And, and that's where we copied most of this stuff, is from the other counties that have already done something. What AMC was recommending, that's the Association Minnesota Townships, so.
You know, all the counties are pretty similar, it's a lot easier than having one that's really different.
Yeah, I'm, I'm afraid there'll be, there's going to be some differences between counties. Yep.
Put a deal in there that say if they can grow cannabis, that they can't own guns or something?
Well, the freedom of speech, freedom.
Well, I, that's a whole different issue, I don't know, that'd be something up to the ATF to decide. I mean, that, that's been brought up by ATF that, yeah, you're not allowed to, because it's illegal under federal law, so you're not supposed to be able to possess firearms if you are under.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? Under use federally prohibited drugs, so. That's, there lies the issue there, so. But that's above our wheelhouse. It's also illegal for it to go across state lines too, under federal law, so it's just up to them whether they want to enforce that or not.
Couldn't we put a deal in there that we can shoot them if they got a gun?
No.
Um, Wisconsin, they're kind of waiting to see how it turns out in Minnesota, isn't it? I think they're, they haven't done.
Yeah, they haven't done anything yet that I've heard of, no.
I think there was something in here on this, but is there, so if you're playing at a park with your kids, people can't be smoking at the park?
We do have a, that's a separate ordinance for use in public places.
That's not allowed.
Uh, yeah, I, you're probably more familiar with that than I.
Public use ordinance?
Yeah.
Yep, we passed that a while back, yep.
That last year.
Yeah, you're not allowed to use it in public places, you know, around kids, children.
Yep, your private home is your.
Basically, yep. What's that?
Not with kids in it.
Not with kids in it, I, I, yeah, probably, yep.
No, the way it's set up is it.
Hell, that gets policed, that's another question, but.
The way it's set up is 21 years of age and older for this year.
That was in here.
21 years, yep.
Famous alcohol.
Same as alcohol, cigarettes.
Is that what you were referring to? Oh, yep.
Yeah, that was one of the items the county attorney really made mention of a lot, is that we were trying to look at this very similar to how alcohol is handled.
Need a motion to recommend?
Yeah, if you guys, you could use the findings if you want, and I guess normally you would approve those.
Oh, gotcha.
First, and then you have a final motion.
You guys could go into the findings then?
That's fine.
I'm just looking at them as all in, or all in one.
All in one's good, yeah.
Motion? Would you guys like me to reread them, or you're fine with what I've already done?
This is pretty well covered, everything.
Yeah.
Everything they could legally do. We may as well just vote on that.
Do you have a motion to recommend approval?
I'll make the motion.
So to approval of the text amendments, adding cannabis-related businesses to the ordinance?
Yep.
With the findings?
Findings.
Isn't that all right?
You're approving, are you making the motion, Wayne?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Second? Do a roll call vote?
Josh Grant.
Aye.
John Glasspool.
Aye.
Larry Gosted.
Aye.
Wayne Feldmeyer.
Yep.
Eric Johnson.
Aye.
All right.
All right, then, uh.
So we'll get that updated.
Good on that one then?
Yeah. That should work. I guess if everybody else is satisfied. So the second thing, I guess I just wanted to cover was giving you guys an update. Well, not an update, I guess, just filling you in on what actually is going on with the solar moratorium, because I think it's been a while since we met, so you're probably not aware of any of that at all, am I correct? Okay. And so I left a packet, I emailed that out last week because I didn't make the mail, but you guys should all have copies there now. So last kind of late fall, or late summer, early fall, we started getting some inquiries into commercial solar and what the requirements would be here. And, and then there is a, a project that was kind of getting pushed around as well. And when I started looking into the ordinance and what the requirements were, I, I don't know if what we actually have in our zoning ordinance right now is, was even meant to regulate a commercial solar operation. And so in discussions with the commissioners, we put together a moratorium, or some moratorium language, and they reviewed that as well on December 31st, and they put that in place for six months to give us some time to do some research and decide on whether we want to update our ordinance and, and look at doing some performance standards or bond requirements and, or different things like that. And so I think I put a copy, a draft copy of that ordinance in your packet there, and then also kind of my memo that I had written to the board on why I was asking for that. So at this point, we haven't done much, Eric's done some research, but I haven't had a chance to get anything else kind of in writing for you, but I guess I just wanted to make you guys aware that that is out there, and that will be a project that's coming to you guys in the near future, because with a six-month moratorium, we would need to have that probably, I guess I figured maybe a draft proposal to you by March or April, and then that way we could go back, bounce back to the board for in, additional input, or, or a public meeting elsewhere if needed, and then probably bringing more of a final draft to you then end of June, or May, I guess. I got some things to keep in mind, or kind of think about is size. It sounds like there's kind of two different type of operations out there. There's transmission and distribution. One is a much larger, on, on a much larger scale, you're looking at hundreds of. Uh, hundreds of acres or a hundred acres or whatever versus, uh, like maybe a forty-acre type project. And so, and we're also looking at potential setbacks, if there should be soil requirements. Um, just different things like that, so if you guys. Kind of wanna ask around and see what constituents say, or what the opinions are on that, we'll be looking for that in the future.
It says it does not apply to the private solar array. How is, um, commercial versus private, like, uh, identified, or what's the restriction between the two?
The size and then how it's being proposed. Like, we do issue a num- a number of permits for rooftop solars on houses. Or, um, arrays in their backyard. I forget what, how many kilowatts those are versus like the five, I think. One that we had come for commercial, is that five megawatts?
Five megawatts.
Let's say, so I know some farmers that like, they'll put them on their big sheds or whatever on the roofs and stuff.
And that's considered re- that's considered local, small.
Even if they, I know some of them will put it on the ground.
Yep, that, those are still can, we've had those permits for those two small ones, yeah.
They're, I guess they are going back to the grid, but they're connecting to that local source first versus directly to like a substation.
Straight pumping into the system would be more. Through yours first, then to.
The ones that have been doing are local in that metering. Systems, so, yeah.
You could have a big one if that, if it was just to do your farm type thing.
Yeah, those are not impacted by this at all.
We just need to come up with ordinance for these larger ones, like. Like, uh, Amelia was saying, there's the local distribution is what I call it. Going right into the substation for local transmission. And then there's the large ones for commercial that are going to be, you know, dig new lines or new wires to go out of county, whatever. You know, those are the hundred-acre ones, four hundred acres, five hundred. Dodge County, they did a fifteen-hundred acre one, so. I've been looking at a lot of ordinances throughout the county, throughout the state, different county ordinances. They all got different site setbacks and stuff. In our land use plan. Our number one priority is to preserve prime farmland, and so. I said, I gave you guys a copy of this here. It, it, you guys could read that when you have time, and it talks about how. Couple of these have been denied, and they were appealed in court, um, but they ended up winning in court. Because they had it in their land use plan that of, of a priority to protect farmland. And so they felt, the court felt then that that was enough, so. You know, I'd like to see a happy medium to try to find, you know, hey, we can allow these smaller, smaller projects. On, you know, five megawatt, let's say, or something that goes into the substations for local use through my energy system. Let's, let's try to protect our prime farmland for these, from these big ones. But maybe not, I don't know. That, that's just trying to get some ideas here, so.
And these could pop up anywhere in the county, but the line that runs kind of, or, like the bottom third of the county. Like, um, Jefferson Ridge across, that's been identified as like a higher transmission line that would better accommodate some of, or. Just make it easier for them to tie in. So I think we'll probably see more of those pressures in the Wilmington, Spring Grove area than anything.
Now, these companies that are doing that, are they leasing the land, or are they buying the land, uh, from the landowner? Or what's happening?
Um, the, both of them that talked to me, it sounded like would be leased.
You know, if they built these things right, you could let sheep run in the bottom of it, or goats or anything.
A lot of them do that.
Yeah, that's a big thing, um, pollinator habitat.
Cause then the goats would clean up the grasses, and you know, they could move them from paddock to paddock, you know.
And that would be something we could potentially consider too in the ordinance, is if we wanna require people do something like that to manage weeds.
They gotta have cover, you know, whether it's pollinators or native, native grasses, or. Or to, you know, we don't, we don't say they have to run goats, but I mean, they could, they could do that, yeah.
So kind of just, uh, I wanted to give you guys a heads up that this is coming. Uh, I know a few of you guys are involved with townships and. Um, or other organizations, so you can re-chat with other people and get opinions on it.
Is anything happening on, uh, the big dairy out, out here?
Has anything happened? They, there was a petition for an EAW that got approved, and that kind of shut things down for, uh. I think, I don't know if they have a determined amount of time for those, but twelve to fourteen months usually, so.
If you go out to the Dakotas or anyplace out there, they sell the land by how many pounds are, or how much, how many gallons of water. They can produce, and so if this guy's got three wells already, you know, he's taking a lot of water out of the system.
City of Spring Grove has taken a hundred times more.
Yeah, but they're feeding a lot of people too there.
Right, but I mean, there's, there's second, they're out of the same aquifer, so I mean, they're taking heck a lot more than that dairy is.
Yeah, I think that dairy feeds a lot of people too.
Let's see, when they took the water. Some of those, uh, deals down in Houston, when they took that one, um, well, right outside of town. That well produced a lot of water. When they let that thing run free, and all the neighbors. Had wells that didn't work, then they had to close it down.
Oh, you're talking about Vicks's? That was probably, it was in a shallow well too, so.
Yeah, it was.
How much bigger were they? I know it never actually came, but.
Just under a thousand animal unit addition.
What are they today?
They're, well, they are at like seven hundred and seventy-six animal units, I think, and they were looking to go to sixteen.
More than double what they do there? You look at all the farms that quit in that area, it'll be the same amount of livestock as it ever has been. Every, every farmstead within a mile of there, I mean, how many of them are gone? Two hundred cow dairies, they're closed down, so the same amount of water is gonna get used, so.
A lot of the animal, animal agency wanted the increase for was for dry cows, because they house them. At other feedlots, and they're afraid those feed, guys are gonna retire and don't wanna take care of them anymore, so they wanted to bring the dry cows back home. So that's why they wanted to expand. But that's, you know, women is still under their moratorium, so that's sitting still right now.
That many people were like that opposed to, to do the EAW?
Uh, so the project itself didn't meet a mandatory threshold, but they could, uh, submit a petition to require one. And that only requires a hundred signatures.
Hundred people, lo- do they have to be, I suppose, the whole county?
They have to be in Minnesota, I think, is the stipulation, or landowners in Minnesota.
So you can go get anyone.
Other counties.
Kind of a crock. I mean, cause right, you're talking about, one of the main things is promote farm use in the county, or farmland in the county, right? And you guys wanna expand farming in the county and get a bunch of pushback, kind of a pain for them.
How, how big of a farm is too big, though? You ever ask anybody out there that question?
You ever ask, ask a farmer?
How big is too big?
That's true. Like, that's a tough quote, right? It's like, I think about if you build a business and farming is a business at the end of the day, and then. It's your livelihood, it's everything you ever put your life into, and then somebody tells you, you're too big now, and you're like. I will get up every morning at two AM and work all day, and you're telling me how big I can get? I'm not, I'm helping people, I ain't harming people. Providing food for people, jobs for people. Lot of money going into the local economy.
The day of the, the small farms, I mean, they're still around, and that's great. If they can still go, that's great, but, you know. Forty years ago, everybody milked in the valleys. I mean, they milked in the ridge, every farm milked, you know, but that's, those days are gone, so it's getting just more concentrated.
That's not even a big farm, really, if you.
No, there's.
Looking around, I mean, with what I deal with, I.
Yeah, there, there's, there's bigger feedlots in the county that are bigger than them right now, so.
You don't have to go very far, and that's a small farm, you know, compared to some of the stuff in western Minnesota.
But like back to the solar thing, do we want all our prime farmland under solar panels? I mean, we wanna, you know, cause usually they wanna build these things on flat, it's gotta be on flat ground, which usually is your best ground, you know.
There's a couple pretty good size spreads down by La Crescent there, with these solar panels, um, up on that north.
But north, north ridge is a good sized one out there.
That, well, that was not prime farmland.
No, no, that's different. That was, that was a rough.
I've been on that one.
Yep, yep, that was rocky, rock pile, yep.
Feel sorry for whoever had to put them both in.
That'd be in Winona County then?
Yeah, just across the line. And yeah, you look at those, and they go like this, I mean, and they gotta be a job to put together if it's. That's perfect, though, if you could underutilize land and.
It used to be an orchard.
That'd be great if they could use, you know, poorer ground, rougher ground, hillier ground, or something like that. Only thing concerns me and, and me being a farmer, I just hate to see good, nice, flat ground. Five hundred acres going into solar panels, and then we gotta still farm our side hills, you know, it'd be better if you could use the side hills and. Keep the good stuff for farming.
So you put these on a side hill, you know, what, I don't, I guess I don't know the dimensions of a panel, what are they, like eight, or are they ten feet wide, or?
Yeah, they're, they're very, very lot in size.
So you get that, you, it's like a bunch of roofs, does that, how much erosion does that create on the side hill?
Run off, yep. It's all gonna be figured in.
I don't know how that would work, you know? This is all gonna come off in one line. Cause they cut a trench right away, and then. Never stood next to one when it's raining, so.
Yeah, so if you guys have thoughts or whatever over the next couple of months, either let Eric, he's been doing a lot of research, so let him know, or myself know. Can dig into it more, hit something like that, or. I'll just make note of it. Other than that, um, I was kind of looking at geo-permits, and I don't think I have accounts for m- most of you, I guess, other than Wayne. Um, so at some point here.
Must have one for me, don't you?
Well, you, I should, cause you probably have one through the township, but I'll have to get you added to the planning commission role. Cause then you get, whenever applications come in, you get automatic notices, and then dates and everything gets sent out through that too. You always get everything, um, but hard copies anyway, but I'll work on that. And if you guys get, I don't remember if we created you an account, maybe I just didn't get you added to the role either. Um, but if you ever need help navigating that program too, just let me know. I don't think so. I have that, like those guys from the, their township involvement.
Could we talk about the cabin and? How many we can put on per acre? I know Jake Weiser had talked with you guys, or the auditor, or the taxer. And Jake got him to drop the taxes on, a lot on that, cause they were taxing it pretty high, you know. If we could set this up so that these people can go out there and make money with them. You can get the tax from something else, you know.
He was in last Tuesday, and I, he had a long discussion with the assessor. And I don't know what came out of that, so.
Well, Jake tells me that he got this assessor not to put a value on cabins. Could that be true?
I'm not sure. I don't know. I have to find out what the, what, what they resolved on that.
Yeah, I don't know anything about the tax side of it, but it is something that I've, uh, heard from a couple of the campground owners that they. And I understand that that's kind of the way camping is going now, is staying in these, uh, little like camper cabin type, um, structures. Rather than tent camping, and the way our current ordinance is set up, we only allow one cabin. Uh, per quarter-quarter, and then like campgrounds, I think it does specifically state something about tents. And so that might be something we look at in the ordinance coming up too, is just allowing them as part of a campground that's permitted as a campground. Not one of these home.
Would that, would like tiny homes be in that category, like, or not?
Yeah, that's kind of what, some of these are just, uh. And, uh, then there's some too that actually have a small kitchen area.
But if they're under two hundred square feet, like if you go to Beaver Park, Beaver Park has little cabins, they're under two hundred square feet. There's square beds in them, there's three square beds and a table, that's all that's in them. And they do all the cooking and stuff outside. I think that if you make it so they do the cooking outside, it wouldn't be a year-round thing.
Yeah, there's no plumbing or nothing like that.
Yeah, and so like the two hundred square feet, um, not requiring a permit deal is for accessory structures. Which they can't necessarily be resided in at any point, so, and, and that's not necessarily the same use as a cabin. So I would say, if, if somebody asked me if they need a permit to move in a little cabin, I tell them, yeah, it's a conditional use permit.
You see, like, Tim Vicks is trying to put a bathroom in each one of these cabins, cause in the fall of the year. The women don't wanna go out and go to the bathroom anywhere else. They wanna have something in, in-house.
You talking up on the ready ground there?
See, he's got, uh, well, we figure we could put them in down there by the river too, and just put them up on stilts. Or put them up on spent blocks.
He doesn't own that down by the river anymore, does he? Thought he just had the top.
No, he's got everything down there.
That brown crown has that down by Gary Anderson's there?
No, the. Yeah, brown.
You mean Tom Vicks?
Tom Vicks, yeah.
Oh, you, I thought you meant said Tim.
See, we figure we could put these big spent blocks up, put them up three or four feet, and then just let, let them air out, you know. And the water would never get that high.
Well, you'd still need to get a permit for that.
Well, yeah.
I told him.
Tell him that.
But if it's floodway, then it's a no-go for sure.
Yeah, if it's in the flood plain, you can't do it.
Well, if the flood never can get that high, though.
It don't matter, if it's a flood plain, you can't do it.
I have nothing else, otherwise.
Motion to adjourn, anyone? Yeah, sure, second.